I call to order this special meeting of the Gladstone City Council on Thursday, January ninth, February ninth. The year's just moving right along. I don't have an agenda in front of me. Usually I'd read stuff like this, make it a lot easier. At six thirty eight P. M. The the purpose of tonight's meeting is to interview candidates who have applied for the vacant position on the Gladstone City Council, the vacancy having been created by the election of former councillor Vanessa Hartman to the state legislature. We have three applicants who will be present tonight. One is on the way, I am told. And but I just want to go over a little bit the procedures that we'll be following tonight. This is not a meeting to deliberate or make a decision on the appointment. This meeting is an opportunity to ask, to interview candidates in person, to get a little more information beyond that that was included on the written applications that were submitted by the candidates. And this is the procedure we follow. We have six questions that have been prepared for us tonight. And we will take turns asking the questions. One councillor will ask question number one, a different councillor will ask question number two, and so on. When the applicants respond to the questions, we will take them in the order from left to right for the very first question. But beyond that, we will begin then each question, subsequent question with a different applicant. So that everyone has the opportunity to be first two times, to be second two times, and to be third two times. It is okay if you are not the first person being questioned to respond with, I would say what the other applicant said, and in addition to that, add anything more that you want. So that way, you know, there may be some advantage to going first. There may be some advantage to hearing what someone else has said and having a little bit more time to think about it. This is a procedure we've seen that the local school board does when they have vacancies. And we, I think their experience has been that it's fair to all the people involved. And and it's a good procedure to follow. Now, I've instructed the councillors, your notes that you're taking tonight, and you have three sheets, one that you can put the name of each applicant at the top. If you want to take notes on this, they will be part of the public record. But because the decision will not be made until next week, you can hold on to your notes. And when we come time to deliberate and vote on applicants, we will, you'll have your notes with you for that. And then we will collect them at that time. Yes, councillor. I I had thought about that. What the what the school board has often done is, I think, three minutes for the first person and two minutes each for the others. But since each person's questions responses may be considerably different, I would think three minutes for everyone would be appropriate. So Tammy Bannock, are you equipped to use a three minute clock on on people?
I can certainly have that.
Okay. And applicants certainly do not need to use all three minutes. If you can be very concise, that's fine. And and if the clock goes off, try to finish up that sentence if you can. I guess is the best way to do it.
And our councillor is able to see the clock on your. Okay.
Okay. Oh, yes. Good. So we'll, we'll give you, I think it makes a little beep at the end.
It does. Yes, you'll hear a sound at the end.
Trevor, welcome. Hi, I was just going over the procedure. The council tonight will ask questions that are beyond the scope of what we asked you on the application that everyone filled out. We will take turns asking one question at a time that applies to all three applicants. But we will ask you to respond in a different order each time. The first question, I'll just go from left, my left to my right. The second question, you will be asked to respond first, Maria second, Mark third, and so on. We'll, we'll rotate the order. So if everyone is ready, I'm ready to ask the first question. Any other questions? Veronica, you're hearing everything okay? All right.
Do we want to do a roll call first, just to?
All right, let's let's do that. We'll begin with a roll call to to so that we know who's here.
Councillor Huckabee.
Present.
Councillor Alexander.
Yes.
Councillor Riekel.
Yes.
Councillor Roberts.
Yes.
Councillor Garlington.
Here.
Mayor Milch.
Here. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance as we do for all of our meetings. Ready, begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes. I do.
A couple suggestions. I'm, can we put the screen down so the applicants can see councillor Riekel? I see her smiling. She thought she was getting away with that tonight. And the other one is that I do have a copy of the questions, if that helps applicants better to read along when the question's asked to you. If you would like one, I'm happy to give one to you.
And can I just confirm all three of you guys don't have any further questions? We do understand the process. Fantastic.
Okay. Yes, that's one thing I should have said. In order to be picked up on the recording and actually for us to better hear you, it does help if you push the button when it's your turn to speak. If you push it again, it shuts off. So, you know, just kind of just do it during your time. All right, I believe we're ready to begin, and I have the first question. So Mark, you will be the first one to respond. A city thrives on the participation of its citizens. What role do elected officials play in mobilizing civic involvement and encouraging citizens to voice their concerns, vote in local elections, and volunteer in their community?
Thank you for the question, and it's great to be here. You know, I'm, that's something that's always exciting to me because I think involvement is very important. So as an elected official, just getting out and making sure, I really like what the councillor Robert said in on on the webpage, where he said, you know, he is approachable and and wants to be able to be talked to by people. And some, so many times people feel that they can't approach elected officials. And people always ask me, they're like, hey, how do you get in to see that person? And it's because I'll ask the councillor, can I come meet with you? And I think making sure that people know that you're available and reaching out to the community. I think lately there's been a great job done with the webpage, reaching out to people, contacting people, and just involving the community by your actions. You know, you lead by example, and if you get out there and talk to people, it's going to encourage other people to come talk to you. And I just appreciate that the fact that people want to get involved when they see their leaders being involved with them.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Taylor, would you like me to read the question back, or are you prepared to answer? All right.
I think it's important that communication is prioritized by all elected officials. I feel like people that are not involved can benefit by being overly communicated with or communicated with at all. Enhancing website accessibility, forums for people to comment and contact elected officials, I think, is also really important. But networking and communication involving yourself in ongoing events and staying up to date on what's going on so you can actively have those conversations, I think, is really important.
All right. Thank you. Maria.
Thank you. So I believe elected officials should do their best to remain active in the community, going to events, maybe new events or longstanding events like the Shukat Talka Fest or Gladstone Community Festival, I think is what we call it now. And then there's new events like Bingo Night in the library, sign unveiling, all of those kind of things, being open and honest and active listening and just being available and just doing your best to let people know when there's volunteer activities or new things coming up that they I noticed a lot of times Mindy mentions the clothing closet, those kind of activities. And I think those are important ways to reach out and just make sure you're involved in the community around you that you serve.
Make sure your microphones are on when you're speaking.
I apologize. Councillor Huckabee has question number two, and the first one to respond will be Trevor Taylor.
What have you done to educate yourself of the issues facing the city of Gladstone? How have you prepared yourself to assume the duties of city councillor?
Personally, I have, I have studied the website. I have browsed through previous city council notes, the meeting minutes to gather what kind of issues go on on this kind of level. I'm also a part of several Facebook groups which allow me to see into that perspectives of people that live in Gladstone. In addition to that, I feel like that gives me a pretty good idea of what needs exist and what, you know, needs to change.
We take a little bit of time to take our notes here, so I apologize for any delays in between. Okay, so. Councillor Huckabee.
Maria, would you like me to read the question again? So if the light's still on, does that mean? You're good. Okay. You're golden. So it helps to edge, to be a part of the community, talking to business owners, talking to different facilities in Gladstone, being a part of network groups like Facebook and seeing those things come up as they arise. And for myself, it helps that I've lived here for a while, but I also went to high school here and I also work in Gladstone. And I worked off and on in Gladstone for years. So I feel like I know several different groups. I'm a part of several volunteer groups in Gladstone as well. And so I think those things would help prepare me. And Mark, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I feel like Trevor's been spying on me. Because you can just, you can take what he said, and then I'll sort of add to that. And, and, you know, I, I like to stay active on Facebook and look at those things. And one of the things that I've done is that through my personal life and work, I am involved in quite a few things. I'm the vice president of Gladstone Community Club, and I, I teach martial arts there, involve dancing and try to, you know, involve myself. So I'm always interacting with people in the community to find out more about it. And how I prepared myself is really just looked into what needs to be done and and looked at your plans and what was done during the trains, just like Trevor's saying. So really, you know, just trying to understand what's, what's going on and understanding the issues of the community. So I'm active in some of the the boards in the county area. And so being active in my own community is something that I've been looking to do. So just, just pay attention to those things and how it affects us, you know, on the trickle down from the county and state.
Councillor Alexander, you have the third question.
This is going, this one go to Maria. Gladstone has various boards under the city council, library, parks, planning, senior center and traffic safety. Additionally, there are regional commitments. C four, West, North Clackamas County Water Commission, Clackamas County Research Justice Study Board, School, School Board. As a member of the council, you will be asked to be a liaison to one or more of them. Which of these can you see yourself getting involved in with and how?
Well, my interest definitely lies in libraries, as I work at four of them, including Gladstone Library. And I'm also on the Library Foundation. So I actually don't know if I could be a liaison to the library since I'm that involved. But I'm also passionate about the senior center and several of these. And additionally, I have a background in criminal justice and mental health. So I would be very interested in the Clackamas County Research Justice Study as well. And really, any of these are very interesting to me, and I would like to be involved. Thank you.
Second, another shot at it. You want me to read that again? Okay.
Okay, well, I watched the last meeting and saw that everyone got all the good committees, so. No, I, for me, I'm part of Oregon Impact, which is a nonprofit organization that does safe, safe driving awareness, distracted driving, DUI, child safety, see things. So traffic safety is is always something I'm looking at. It's my livelihood, you know. But also, I think being asked to do something that's outside of your wheelhouse is always something fun to do, you know, to to learn something different. So I think you just have to be flexible as a commissioner. If, you know, someone asks you to go into this committee, then you research it and find out about it and have a great time doing it.
Trevor, you want me to read it again, or you got it still?
I've got it. Thank you. As a senior living professional for the past 10 years, I think the senior center would probably be best for me to assist with. This, or being part of this is my interest because I, I wanted to give my time to something that was more important than just myself, be part of a change that could affect a lot of people. And I feel like I have also the executive management experience to also assist in planning, which would be exciting for me to learn. But as I said earlier, I've been in senior living for the past 10 years. I think I would bring a very valuable and unique perspective to that. There's a lot of seniors that live with undiagnosed Alzheimer's dementia that don't even know it, that their family members don't even know it. And they don't have the resources to get out there, find out that they do. So I think just being a liaison for that would be really important to me.
And I will say, just briefly in response to Mark's comment, although we did ask the city councillors what interests they had in current liaisons, we have not yet made official appointments. So none of those positions are quite taken yet. But it, you know, it's always helpful to hear, get this kind of feedback from interested members of the community. Thank.
May I please ask a follow up question for Trevor? If not the senior center, like Mayor Milch said, the positions haven't been picked. But if not the senior center, where might I second interest there, Eli? As I said, I think my executive management experience would make me a good applicant for the planning committee. I have to do a lot of structuring and restructuring in my business and overseeing so many employees and so many residents that live in my community. So I feel like that would be a good use of my skills. Thank you.
All right, councillor Riekel, you are on Zoom. You can hear us. We can hear you. You are responsible for asking question number four. We are back to the beginning, so Mark will be the first one to respond to that question. Go ahead. Councillor Riekel.
Okay, thank you. And you can hear me. Okay, yes. Okay. Okay, so explain what you believe makes Gladstone special or unique in a positive way? And how would you propose to preserve, protect, and enhance those qualities? Give an example of how you have worked collaboratively on a project or issue in Gladstone. Thank you for the question. So many of you may know about AMR's lifeguards on High Rocks. So we, my family decided to move from the Happy Valley area to Gladstone because we looked at the schools. And the current school my children were going to, I just started going to, and my son was in kindergarten. There was forty eight children in his class, one teacher. So we came to Gladstone, we're looking, we had friends from church here, who I just found out works here, Haley. And as we looked at the community, we thought this is a great place to grow. But within the first week of working here, there were five deaths at High Rocks. And we had started a river rescue program out at Glen Auto. And so I went to the vice president of our company and said, look, it, this has got to stop. And it's got to stop now. If we're doing it somewhere else, we need to do it here. So they told me we didn't have the money in our company to do it, and if we wanted to do it, we'd have to find the money. So I went through my position at the Chamber of Commerce to Jackie Gaines, who used to be the administrator of Providence Milwaukee Hospital, and to a friend of mine, J. J. Cole, and some people in the community, and said, we need some money to protect lives at the river. And I got some seed money, get that started, and ever since then, AMR's been doing it. But you know, it's, it's recognizing what needs to be done and then being creative about doing something. The company that Trevor works for actually helped us with money, the Goodman Company, to get that started. And I think, you know, in the question that says, how would you preserve and protect? We need to think about the things that are important to us. Our history, the powwow tree, are we focusing on how do we make sure that that tree continues to stand and continues to be part of our community? It's history. It's Native American history, and it, it, in the next big storm could be gone. So what can we do? Things like that. And I think that what makes this little community so unique and why I wanted to come here is it's between Milwaukee, Oregon City, Happy Valley. We are like a little nook of goodness. You know, there, and there's a lot of great people in this town, and we need to make sure that people know it's not all about Oregon City, Milwaukee, Clackamas, that Gladstone has a voice, and we need to make sure we protect that voice. Hey, thank you. Are you guys ready to move? Do you need me to read the question again, Trevor?
I think I'm ready to respond.
Cool.
When I think about what makes Gladstone special or unique, it makes me think of why I wanted to move here in the first place. And honestly, I feel like it's very safe. I don't have to worry about things happening to my dogs. I don't have to worry about people breaking into my house. I don't have to worry about the bad things happening because I feel supported by my neighbors and I feel like I live in a very safe area. Whereas that's pretty unique in Portland nowadays. So I feel like it's really important to preserve that safety aspect. I like how it has a small town feel, even though we're so close to everything. I personally haven't worked collaboratively, crap, cool, sorry, collaboratively on a project in Gladstone. But I have led many collaborative projects in my experience as a professional and would feel really comfortable with doing that in this capacity as well. I, I take care of my brother who is blind and autistic, and I feel like he is embraced in this community. And I feel happy that I was able to provide this for him, so I want to preserve that.
Okay, are we ready? Maria, are you ready?
Yes, thank you.
Do you need me to read it again?
No, thank you.
Okay.
So Gladstone is one of those towns that you read about or watch on like nineteen fifty show. It's a very small town feel. Everyone is walking down the street, saying hello and good morning. You see police and business owners out and about. And we have this great history of the powwow tree and to preserve and protect, like Mark said. And also different historical aspects, like the Charlie Bridge and the high school that's been around, what, since the sixties, I believe? So all these little things, we have the community festival that's been going for, I think, a hundred plus years now. And these are all little things that make Gladstone special and way we personally wanted to move here because I had grown in, up in and out of Gladstone. And then I, why I wanted to come back was for these little qualities that Gladstone has. And if we continue to get these things going and continue to get people interested in Gladstone, I think this is the ways we can keep Gladstone, Gladstone growing and still keep the nature of Gladstone itself.
Can I ask a quick question? Maria, did you, did you have any groups or projects that you've worked on in Gladstone? I just want to make sure we get it all.
So sorry, I guess I did need it read, read back to me. Yes, I, aside from working in Gladstone, I worked at Northwest Behavioral when it still existed. I worked at Gladstone High School, and I currently work at Gladstone Library. I was also on the library advisor committee that took place for, I want to say, four months back in two thousand fourteen. And then since two thousand sixteen, I've, sorry, not worked, volunteered at the advisor committee. And then I volunteered at Gladstone Library Foundation since two thousand and sixteen as well.
All right, councillor Roberts, you have the next question, and the first respondent will be Trevor.
Thank you, mayor. Question, how would you strengthen the city's working relationship with the county, the state, metro, and other tax districts on multi-jurisdictional issues like affordable housing, transportation, social services, and the economy? I feel like in the question, how do we strengthen implies that something is broken. So I feel like it is important to communicate because there is a lot that is misunderstood at higher levels of government. So I feel like networking, communication, collaborating are all very needed things that should happen in order to, for everyone to get on the same page and build and strengthen the relationships there. And I would fully be in support of doing that myself. That's what, that's how I practice my work. I think communication is the most important thing there is, so that's what I see myself doing. Maria. I'll save you reading back the question.
I don't know, I might need it this time. So I believe that these are definitely issues that we need to talk about in Gladstone. For example, the housing, I was really excited when I saw the housing just go into the facility that I used to work at, Northwest Behavioral, over on Webster. And getting, seeing new houses occasionally pop up is exciting. And we need to make sure transportation is accessed. So developing these different relationships with different counties, different areas, different cities, I think would be very important and definitely networking and getting ideas on how other cities struggle with the same situations and getting feedback and support.
And Mark, question five.
Thanks, sir. So I, I really like what both Trevor and Maria had to say. And I'll say this, that when I put my name in and appeared on the webpage, the people that you have be here, I was contacted by several county commissioners, said, hey, would you like an endorsement? Would you? And it's because I work with them. I have, it's, it's because of my job. I mean, that's what I do in my job. I am, I am working with the county on things. I am, I am working with the county on things. So to be honest with you, it's, it, I'm just going to say it is, I'd have to be careful how I would address working with them professionally and as city, right? And, but I do a lot of things with, with the state and local, you know, the commissions, things like that. I'm on the strat committee because I think it's important, I'm, I hate acronyms. I gotta remember what it even means. It's ODOT's Strategic Toll Rule Advisory Committee. Because if the tolls do come, I want to be sure that someone from our area has a hand in understanding how it's going to be processed, right? So I was appointed to that board and I think making sure you're, you're out there and getting in positions where you're able to affect how things affect our city, right? And so even if, even if Maria or Trevor are chosen, I just want everyone to know in this room that because of my, those connections, anyone at any time can reach out to me and say, hey, you know, what do you know about this going on at the county? Or what do you know about this going on in the tolling? Because it's my responsibility as a citizen here. I don't have to be a counselor to help with that. So I just want to make sure that's clear as well. Thanks.
Thank you, all three.
Okay, and what? Okay, oh, good. All right, and the last question is, will be read by Councilor Garlington and we'll start with Maria.
Short and, short, short questions. How would you deal with competing requests or demands from various groups for city resources such as budget and staff time?
I would talk to each, each group and be sure to have open, honest communication and listen to them and make sure I had enough time for them and work with them on budget and our staff time and just have this open, honest communication with them.
Yes, ma'am. So I'm just going to say prioritizers, priorit-
Look at you and I, huh? Easy for you to say.
Prioritizing my, what needs to be done. And really, that's what has to be done is you, you step back and look at where, where the help's needed, how you're going to do it, and then you work your way back from that. So I just want to keep that short and simple.
Managing budget and staff time is one of the main responsibilities of my job and is also one of the largest measurements of my own success professionally. So it's something I'm very familiar with. Also, I, I'm very good at prioritizing things and I don't need necessarily assistance in helping me prioritize things. So I think I would do very well at, you know, handling competing requests or demands from various parties.
Now, we've all had an opportunity to, to review your original applications and the questions that were on there and to know a little bit more about you. We appreciate your response to these additional questions we asked tonight so we could see you in person, put a face with the names and do all that. And we would like, you know, at the end, just to give you one or more opportunities to share in closing, if there's anything else you would like us to know about you. So I'll begin again with Mark and we'll work our way down, but just share anything else that maybe you wish you would have said or that you feel might be missing from, from what's been heard so far.
Well, this is, it's gonna be rough. I came here tonight excited about, about doing this. And I had a, a big meeting downtown today and I was worried about getting here on time. I came in, talked to Tammy and said, hopefully I'll get there on time. And when I got to me, I started reflecting because I'm a person who investigates. I research, I work with data. I, I want, I want things to work. I'm a facilitator. And so that's what I do. I try to see how people fit into a group and how to make a group work well. And I, I got this information about two o'clock because it wouldn't open on my computer because, because of the HIPAA information we get at AMR. The, it had people's names and data, so I, I couldn't open it up. So I didn't get any of this. I didn't know about Trevor or Maria or, or anything until this afternoon. And when I got to my meeting, when I first got there, I started looking through this and started going, wow, this is some great people that are applying for this. And I also last night, as I said, he was spying on me. I, I took extra time last night to just sit down and read through your bios on, on the, on the page. I, I wanted to read Counselor Hartman's resignation letter and just sort of get an idea of the feel. And she said something that really struck me and, and reading these bios from these two, something hit me. And I took notes in my last meeting and I said, in, in Counselor Hartman's resignation letter, she states, "I ran with the conviction that we must have a diverse representation at all levels of government." Then she said, she listed types of diversity. And so when I got here tonight, I started looking at the board and I'm like, there, there's a little bit of me there. There's a little bit of me there. There's a little bit of me there. And so I feel like I'm represented here. And the one thing that I, that I noticed from reading this information was that, you know, we also, I, I read that Travis said that he, you know, is in this area. And one of the things he wrote on his information, which always impressed me, is that he was openly gay. And so when I looked at the, up here, I thought to myself, where is that represented? Right? And I see from your bios, I, I see Huckabee says, you know, "We want to ensure Gladstone is safe, welcoming, and inclusive for all community members." I see that Mr. Alexander says, "He would like everyone who lives or visits Gladstone to feel welcome and included." And, you know, I, I walked in, I saw this little girl that used to sit on my lap at church and we'd sing. And, and both her and our family have children who identify with Trevor. And so I just feel it's, it's important. If, if it was me sitting there, and I'm just going to say this now, I, I, I request that I be removed from consideration because I think you have two people here that I would be happy with representing me. And I just, I, I feel after listening to both of them and hearing what they have to say, that I feel good that I'm represented. And I think I could probably do better than what I'm doing now and, and work with you guys closer. I don't know why I haven't worked with you closer. I, I, I do know why. I, I, I came to a meeting one time and there, and it wasn't you, but I came to a meeting one time and there was a lot of people who were upset and there were things going on and I just said, I don't do that. So before I walked in tonight, I, I prayed and said, what, give me some direction. Make me feel what I need to feel when I get in there. When he started talking and it was explaining, I felt like there's a gentleman who needs to be represented. His, the, his, his diversity, his perspective is different than I could bring. And I think it's something that he could bring to it. And I appreciate Maria and all she's done, but I just, I, I apologize for that. I, I brought my packets in and everything because I had commissioners and people, you know, encouraged me to go for this. And I'll probably have some people who are upset with me that I did this. But also during my meeting, I got a, a text message from Larry Kraxberger, whose family's got a school named after him in this town. And he said, "I love you. I will, will support you, but don't embarrass me because you know we both have very different political opinions." And we do. And I think, and, and I responded to him that my, my personal opinions can't overweigh, if I was on the, the city council, my commitment to the people, right? If, if something the people want, that's what you gotta do. And I feel the, these two right here are, are, would make fantastic representatives. And I think it's, it's just, it's, I don't, I'm good with whoever you choose from these two. And I apologize for taking everyone's time, but it, when I came in here, it just hit me. You know, I'm already doing so much stuff around the county. And I'm probably going to be murdered by some of my friends. I just, I think it's, I think it's important to have someone that can represent my daughter and some other people's friends I know that identify the same way.
Well, we asked a question about encouraging citizens to be a volunteer in their community and you're certainly the good example of someone who does that, all three of you are. And so I appreciate that input. We'll, we'll take that comment into consideration as we, as we, you know, review this and deliberate this next week. Same question to you, Trevor. Is there, in closing, anything else you would like us to know about you? Something about you has been shared, but that was in your application.
Um, well, thank you, Mark, for your kind words. I really appreciate that. Things that I didn't list in my application, I feel like I would be a good fit for this because I would represent people that are not often represented. And I also saw the resignation of Councilwoman Hartman. And what inspired me to actually apply for this was that the original reason that she wanted to apply for being a councilwoman was that she wanted to stand where nobody else looked like her or acted like her. She, she wanted to be the different party. And that's so important to realize that people are different from ourselves. And even myself, I've had to come to the realization that not everyone is the same as myself. So I'm in a place in my life now that I can understand that fully. And I, I want to embrace and advocate for anybody that is different or chooses to live their life the way that other people might perceive as wrong. I'm, I'm an advocate for so many things and I, I think that's what I most pride myself in. I think that I, I would add a very valuable perspective to the council and that's why I think I would be a good fit.
Maria, anything else we should know about you?
I had it on the whole time and the one time I turned actually off. I do as well also believe in representation and making sure every was, everyone feels welcome and included, having a background and wide background in criminal justice, mental health, disability services, I worked education and now libraries. These are all vulnerable populations that I feel need to be represented. And having a diverse community is very important. And I am very passionate about Gladstone and this small little town. And I have, like I said, lived in it and volunteered in it. I also volunteer on the safety committee in Happy Valley as well. I don't remember if I mentioned that in my application, actually. So I believe in little communities and helping them strive to be the best they can be. Thank you for your time.
I do the same thing. I want to thank all of you for coming tonight. When we go through a process like this, we learn a great deal from it about how the council is perceived in the community, how the city is perceived in the community. That's why we ask the kinds of questions we ask. Because not only does it help us in a deliberative process that we'll engage in next week, but it helps us to understand the community we serve and that we have sworn to serve and make better. And so I appreciate the input we have from each of you. We put this application or this, this opportunity out to a huge city, you know, twelve thousand people, eight thousand some registered voters. We could have had a lot of applications and a, a small number stepped up and we appreciate that. And we will take this input from you and next week. The expectation is that people who have applied for this position and want to be considered from it would, if, if we make a selection next week, that person would be appointed and sworn in that night. So the city will be providing copies of the packet for the board. In fact, they are here tonight. And so be prepared for the opportunity of stepping in to serve. All right, and I want to thank you all for coming tonight. Councilors, are there any questions about the procedure where we go from here? Again, this is not a deliberative time tonight, but this is information gathering. Councilor Riekel.
Um, I don't really have a question. I just did want to echo, and I'm sorry, I've got a little frog in my throat. I wanted to echo what you said about thanking all three of you for coming and stepping up to the plate and wanting to be a part of our community. It's really important. And whichever way this goes, I really hope to see your faces more and get to know you better so that we can work together inclusively. So thank you for stepping up. And that's all.
Others?
I would just like to also say thank you very much for all three of you putting in your application and putting yourself out there. I know it's not easy to do. It's, sometimes it's, the anxiety will cripple you. But it's, you know, we have a really good council again, moving forward. And I, I believe that, you know, we are welcoming. I, I have been through a goal-setting session with this group and I can assure you that they are a welcoming group and that we have a lot of good things coming down the pipe. Mr. Burnham, I would really like to talk to you more about ODOT. I'd like to hear a few more things from you, so maybe we can get in touch about that. So, all right, so with that, again, thank you. We'll hope to see you next Tuesday. We'll go from there.
Councilor Roberts, did you have a?
I fear I sound cliche now, continuing the train of thank yous. But just thank you all, your answers were very well prepared, being as you didn't have any time to prepare the specific questions. So thank you and that thank you goes for in between the questions. We kind of just moved on to the next person. It felt a little awkward to me, but thank you, guys.
Anybody else?
I'll just say thank you. We're all positive, solid people for stepping up and I'd be happy with any one of them.
All right, well, that being all the business we have before us, I will adjourn the meeting at six twenty-five P.M. Thank you all for coming. Good night.